...a new vehicle and get a newer or secondhand vehicle, or an electric, or plug-in electric, or CNG, we give you that much money, or alternative mobility like $9,000 for transit pass for several years. So, that's available to all your residents, all members of this city. On the right, if you have school buses, we are converting a lot we spent. At the bottom, you'll see $280 million since 2001, converting thousands of vehicles, old, polluting diesel to compressed natural gas. Last year, for the first time, we approved 33 all-electric school buses that can travel over 100 miles on a charge. So, it's exciting. Another program for yourselves and your residents, Mr. Mayor, is the residential EV charger incentive program. So, we'll give you up to $500 to put an EV charger on your house, on your fence, whatever you want. If you make a little too much money, we'll still give you $250 to do it. Just go to AQMD, and the program's on the right down there, or call Rainbow or myself, we'll get you going. But, the chargers cost anywhere from $470 to $800. That's the charger itself. I mean, like I did a couple of years ago, I may need a little more money for the electrician to come and hook everything up to get to the charger. It's a great program. A lot of people utilize this. This is a really exciting program for your city. I was talking to Public Works Director a little while ago. So, there's, right now, commercial electric lawn equipment and garden equipment that's just as good as the gas and diesel stuff out there. On the left, there's six participating manufacturers now. This is a type of equipment, riding lawnmower, stand-up rider, there's robotic equipment, electric chainsaws, electric leaf blowers. And just an example at the bottom, so you take an electric leaf blower, they can cost anywhere $1,300. We discount the price. We give you $500, so the total cost is $500. That person, that commercial lawn and garden person will never have to buy gas, oil, and all the little WD-40 that cleans out their stuff. Your city can do this, Mayor. I'm not sure if you have in-house people who do it, or we contract out in South Pass. We did this about four years ago. We got the, our largest park is only 10 acres, but we said, convert it over into contract. We converted over all electric. Two years later, now it's been a couple of years, our entire city, our soccer fields, our baseball fields, when I go and coach, I don't smell gas. The parents love it, the kids love it, the people walking their dogs love it. Our library, we've converted our golf course almost all the way over now. But, this equipment's feasible, it's workable. It was like the electric car. When we first tried it four or five years ago, it couldn't quite do the whole thing. Now, it does it faster than gas, and no pollution. There's also investments in the city of Baldwin Park. This is what you guys have invested, Mr. Mayor. Your city and your staff and the council members have won $270,000 in funds from AQMD for large diesel trucks and school buses. You've also utilized a lot of money from the mobile source. This is money that's on everybody's car registration. You get a certain, each city gets 40% from all your residents, and you use that money wisely to purchase two natural gas heavy-duty vehicles. You've installed EV charging in your parking structure everywhere else, and you've expanded your CNG station for a total of nearly $1 million. So, you've used that well, and it keeps coming back every year. And we've looked now, Mayor, you've got, right now, in your AB 2766, again, it's car registration from all your residents, a little over half a million dollars to use as you see fit, but it's got to be used for mobile source air pollution reduction. It'd be used for lawnmower purchases, cars, trucks, things like that, or even for employee trip reduction, get people out of cars, on buses and trains. Again, Mayor, this is just social media. I hope you do look at that lawn exchange program. There's, South Pass is the only city in Los Angeles to do it. Next week, there'll be a city in Ventura County to do it. We're looking for another big city in LA County, it'd be the second city, to convert all their electric lawn equipment to electric. We'll even bring the, the person could have come there in New York right now that got us into it, but they will come, and then we'll give you free equipment to demonstrate with your staff or your contractor for a month or two, try it out, and then you can start purchasing equipment at a very discounted price. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mayor Protem, staff.
Thank you. Excellent work, by the way. Thank you very much for what you've done. You've done an excellent job.
Mayor?
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I have a question for the councilmen. Well, first of all, we appreciate the partnership that AQMD has offered the city of Baldwin Park over the years with electric, you know, clean energy efficiency type of products, but also tree plantings. We had an opportunity to work with Rainbow Young on that several times. So, but my question is about those monitors and that track the air quality. Would there be a possibility to get that closer to the, let's say, the 10 and the 605 interchange, considering just how this is, you know, considered a very polluted area because of the freeway interchange there? Would it be possible at all to get that in the near future?
You know, so you wanted additional air monitoring equipment?
Uh-huh.
What we can do is if you want to have your staff just send a simple paragraph to me, all four of it, we'll see, seeing you on all the exchanges to our executive officer, and see if we can add another monitor, or maybe move on, like you say, closer, because the traffic volume there, the hundreds, when I used to work at Caltrans, the volume on the 10 freeway and the 605, which I had a monitor for traffic accidents and litigation, is incredible. It's one of the busiest besides the 405 and the 10.
Exactly. 405 and the, I think the 101, it's identified as one of the, you know, major intersections or interchanges. And we do have, you know, some, there have been some studies that have highlighted, you know, the pollutants in the air because of the freeway. So, we just want to be able to track that more, and if you can help us do that, I think it would be really helpful to us. And we did see that the closest is in Pomona right now. I don't know if, going west, where is the closest going west?
I believe there's one in Azusa, and then there's one in, by, Caltech and Pasadena.
Oh, okay. So, Azusa is actually probably a little closer. But, yeah, if you, if you could do that for us. So, all we would need to do is send a letter to you.
Letter to us through AQMD, and I'll follow up with our executive officer and see how we can try to budget it. Now, we're getting, there's a project right now in Pasadena, La Canyada, the Devil's Gate Dam sediment removal project, and there's a lot of push to put some air monitors out there as hundreds of diesel trucks move the sediment away from the dam every day. But, we've done it before. We did it when Azusa and Guadalupe were having a disagreement over the Vulcan mining.
Yeah.
In Jaffa Sana, we actually put a monitor by his house, right by the school and the house where they were doing the mining.
Oh, yeah, because we're surrounded by industrial use here, and so, you know, there are definitely some real concerns. I mean, even along the lines of environmental justice issues for many, many years, as you know, with the water contamination of the past and the cleanup efforts. So, my question is, what do you do with those monitors, and if you see, like, accelerated levels of pollutants?
We send inspectors out there to inspect what the cause is. For example, we got a, my colleague on the board is on the west side near Long Beach, and there was high levels of certain contaminants. We went out there, we couldn't find it. Then, we actually, after months of trying to figure out what it was, we contacted the Coast Guard, it was near Long Beach. We actually went out on a Coast Guard boat and boarded a ship. It was, we traced the location to a ship that was emitting some type of bunker fuel that was parked there. They shouldn't have done that. So, we'll send inspectors anywhere.
Okay.
If you've got an issue, and we'll, you know, we can even do, we have to, temporary monitors out there, give you an idea what you're breathing. Mayor Protem, the other issue, I took the train in today, and we've given over $50 million to MetroLink to try to upgrade their trains, because I came in, I noticed, just in the last four or five miles of the train before I got here, I went by four or five schools, dozens of hundreds of residences, and those, even other passenger, not, you know, freight locomotives, they're belching out a lot of diesel. So, we're trying to make MetroLink upgrade their trains, so you, even here, you don't realize what you're inhaling when those trains go by every time.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. No, we would love to have a better understanding of that, considering all the different uses here in this community. And, you know, with the introduction of AB 32 many years ago, what was it, like, 2007, 2008, we really started to move forward in terms of bringing in clean energy, you know, CNG type of vehicles, but perhaps with a better awareness, we can be a lot more active in that area. So, that would be really helpful to this region, I think. You know, Elmani, Baldwin Park, La Puente.
And Mayor Protem, if you're the mayor and council over a long, we can bring our, instead of you coming over to here, we can bring our office to you. We can have advanced technology vehicles here for demonstration, if you like. We can do a demonstration with the lawn equipment. We'll bring all the stuff I showed you up there. I, you know, as you lead the gentleman, again, I would have done a demonstration in front of you with the most powerful electric leaf blower. I could stand, had him standing in the back, and I'll stand here, and he'll blow, my hair will go like this, and paper will go flying. And you think it's a vacuum cleaner, it's so quiet, and there's no pollution.
Well, that'd be challenging for me.
Well, maybe we can incorporate that into a future, like, you know, Arbor Day event or something like that. So, definitely, where is our, where's Manny? Okay, yeah, so Manny, you know, you can definitely, yeah, connect. But, thank you. We'll definitely follow up on that. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. All right. So, at this point, that is the last presentation that we have. At this point, I will now open up the public communication for anyone wishing to speak. You have approximately three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I've been Al Contreras, resident of Baldwin Park, on and off since 1962. The reason I bring up 1962, I have seen the city grow and expand, and moved to the left, to the right, or whatever, north, south, whatever you want to call it. But, one of my biggest issues today happens to be, is the lawsuits that the city's getting. Reading the paper, the city of Baldwin Park got a lawsuit, and they settled for over $7 million. I think we can settle that position by basically bringing in a city manager. All five board members, mayor and council members, have a full-time job during the day. They're not here to manage, direct, the directors of the city. So, they don't know. You guys, unfortunately, don't really know what goes on day-to-day. Your job is mainly to set policy and give direction to a general, I'm sorry, a city manager. My request to you is bring back the position of city manager. Give that authority to your city manager, and I'm hoping that you do hire a city manager, whoever it may be, he, she, whatever. But, therefore, it allows you to just give the direction. I don't see how you can really, honestly, do performance reviews on the employees here in the city. You have your full-time job, and your job is greatly appreciated. But, the same token, make it happen the way it should be. Hire your city manager, give him the authority, and give him direction. You don't have the time. I would ask you, I would beg you, tell me, when was the last time you did a performance review on every individual here in the city, or at least the directors, because you hired them and you fired them. And the lawsuits, how much money have we paid? I understand there's more coming from another chief of police. So, please, look at that seriously. And this, I go to about five council meetings in different cities throughout the San Gabriel Valley. This is the only city that I looked around. We have, what, six or seven police officers around me right now? Go to West Covina, go to Covina, go to Azusa, go to Elmani. They have, usually, it's just the chief of police, and maybe one other officer. Why do we need six, seven, eight officers at every council meeting? Are we having riots here? I thought we got along. So, look at that, and maybe that's also another cost saving. So, please, I urge you to hire a city manager, have our CEO apply for it, and anybody else, but give that authority. You hired the city manager, give him his right due, and I guarantee you, it will reduce our lawsuits. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Contreras. Appreciate that.
Hello, City Council, Baldwin Park residents. Number one, you people are tearing our city apart. You're putting in these new sidewalks and new curbs and everything. What you're doing is you're putting the kids and pedestrians out in the middle of the traffic. I came here today hoping that you people would change things, but no, you're a bunch of communists, dictators, or anything you want to call you people. Today, I went to the market, and a school bus had to wait till I got out of the way for it to make a turn. That's how efficient you people are. Inefficient. These streets are making them dangerous. You're putting the kids out there, you're grownups, you're putting everybody out there. I can imagine what's going to happen eventually. And, Mayor, you said once, oh, some person down Main Street got killed, so we're going to change now things. You made it worse. You're putting people out in front of the vehicles. What's the matter with you people? I know you're blind in one eye, you can't see out the other. Also, if you owe a debt, pay it so the city of Baldwin Park don't have to pay it. Because, you know what? All the people, the gentlemen, the new AQMD, build a monorail. It's more efficient, less gas, less oil, less tires, less everything. But, no, that would be the most efficient thing to do. But, what? He'll come up and convince you, spend millions and millions of dollars to get into their group so they can collect more money. All they're worried about is the same thing you guys are. Put it in my pension by retirement, I don't care what the hell you do with the city. Hey, lawyer, boy, you're a good lawyer. We lost a case to ex-chief of police, $7 million. I know, the insurance is going to pay. I don't care who pays it, you're going to pay it, I'm going to pay it. You know why? Because you're no damn good. Because if you were good, you would have fought, fought, fought. You're no good lawyer. We need a new lawyer. As far as the city, your company made out like a bandit. You get paid no matter if you win or lose. Also, when you people do things, don't look up in the sky or read your minutes. You tell us to turn off our phones, I bet all of you have your phone on, every one of you. So, don't tell people to do something that you don't want to do. And also, think about what you're doing to our streets. You're making them more dangerous than what they were before. You see it in the newspaper all the time, on TV. The other day, some guy stole a car, ran in, almost killed a little girl. That's what you people are doing to our streets. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Time's up. Ding, 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 ding.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, moving along with public communication.
Could I have a translator, please?
Yeah, well, go ahead. We're going to allow you to speak the three minutes, and then she will translate after you finish. Okay?
Pardon me?
Is that what I'm, is that what, do you want to do?
On the clock for three minutes, and then I will translate what you're saying. I'm going to take notes.
You?
I, I-
Under the brown neck, I get five minutes, and you translate what I'm saying at the same time.
No, it's three minutes. Sorry about that. It's three minutes.
I'll check with the lawyers then.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. One of the things, just like Mr. Contreras said, or Mr. Luna said, on the lawsuit, you know, one of the things you guys have to realize, especially you, Mayor, you're the one that's supposed to be in control. I don't care if Alejandra, or Paul, or whoever gets on their little mind that let's get rid of the terrorists. You need to get with personnel and find out exactly what's going to come out of it, okay? We lost this lawsuit with Lily, okay? Now, we're going to get another one with Salzito. The day that Salzito got fired, you and Mrs. Garcia just walked out. Okay? You guys just said, oh, no, this is racist. What racist? We're all Hispanic. Okay? So, it's your duty as a mayor, say, hey, wait a minute, wait a minute, what are you trying to do? Just because he didn't want to do some debt, whoever it was, I'm not going to name, no names, okay? Just fire him. And it wasn't Susan, or Cruz, or anything, okay? It was somebody else, okay? We used, I used to call you guys Los Tres Ratas. Now, there's six, six of you. They son ratas. You're taking the city to bank with your mistakes. The citizens are going to have to pay those $7 million, plus another lawsuit that will come in. The city has to pay her lawyers, we have to pay our lawyers for the city, because you guys, as a mayor, you should say, wait a minute, let's talk about this. Just not for one minute to another, you decide, okay, go ahead, fire them. That's why you have human resources, and that's why you had the city lawyer. The city lawyer should have told you, hey, let's wait a minute, let's find out exactly what the problem is. You didn't, Mayor. You're the one supposed to be in charge. You're the mayor. You're the head of the council, and you're not being the head of the council, okay? So, that's something that you have to realize. Any lawsuit that we're getting is because of you, okay? There's some, you know, I've been in management for a long, it's time.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on with public communication. Oh, go ahead.
So, una de las cosas que quiero decir especialmente al alcalde, lo que dijo el señor Ríos y los que estaban hablando, que no cuidan a las cosas que están pasando en la ciudad. Perdimos una demanda, gracias, con la señorita Lily, y ahorita estamos con otra concejal, Salzito. Estamos, no estamos manejando los fondos bien. Es la, es la necesidad del alcalde de cuidar las cosas, y siento que no está cuidando las cosas como alcalde. No fue la concejal ni Suzanne, ni Vaca, ni nadie, fue otra persona. Antes llamaba a ciertas personas ratas, ahora hay seis. Los residentes son los que van a tener que pagar los $7,000, más otras cosas que vayan a venir. Digo, $7 millones. Por eso tenemos el Departamento de Recursos Humanos para ver qué está pasando con las cosas, pero aquí no se hace eso, aquí nada más despida a la gente. Usted es la cabeza del concilio, y siento que no está haciendo lo que tiene que ser como cabeza del concilio.
All right. Thank you very much. At this point, moving on with public communication. And, all right, so at this point, I will now close. Oh, good evening.
Good evening, members of the concilio of Baldwin Park. My name is Beatriz. I'm resident of Baldwin Park for many years, but also I'm activist in my community, I'm organizer in my church and my community about many issues, immigration, housing, and such a justice. As resident of Baldwin Park, I'm very worried about the bomb that Ms. Alejandra Avila asking for, for the park, OCB Plaza, because now we are in one crisis about affordability and housing. We have more than 200 people living in Baldwin Park, in the streets of Baldwin Park. And also, we have families who have a struggle, pay the rent, because the rate no stop to increase. Every year, every month, we have many families who have a struggle, or they need to move to other cities, even though they born here, the children come back to the school every morning at 6:00, at PM, AM, to attend these schools, because they belong to this community. We write one letter from our group in LA Voice, Organization of the Faith in St. John the Baptist, because we are not worried about only people who are homeless, but also we are worried for our families who don't have money to pay the rents. And we ask you to, for one, for the commitment you did, especially Mr. Paul Hernandez, and you, Mayor, Manuel Lozano, and Alejandra Avila, you made one compromise with our community in last October 10. And also, you attend to the meeting with now Governor Gaby Nielsen, and you promised to our community do something about rent control and affordability, housing, about housing, more affordable housing, or make more affordable housing for our families. And also, I want to clarify one fact that you put in the news, in the newspaper, or in the Baldwin Park now, about the family's income, median family's income is $75,000 a year. That's strong data. The fact is, the families, the median income families in Baldwin Park based in LA Times is $56,000 plus a thousand dollars a year, with one family with four members. So, thank you for listening, and I, I just a time for Emmanuel to read the letter who write to you, to encourage you to do something. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor, in October, before elections, in the last year, many of us attended the housing forum at St. John's, hosted by LA Voice and Betty. And many of you, the majority of you, the ones that were seeking reelection or election, promised to support affordable housing, supportive housing, and rent control, with also including just cost for eviction. So, this is just, so now we're here reminding you to follow through with your promise that you made to the residents. Currently, we're seeing, you know, a lot of displacement. The average, the average family in Baldwin Park does not make enough to own any of the new developments that we've seen that you've supported. And not only does that cause for displacement and gentrification, it ruins our communities, it erases the culture of the people that have lived here for century, for decades and generations. And, you know, the goal of rent control and any measure related to it should be to relieve the financial burden of families. The inability to afford, the inability to afford rent or housing hurts our mental health or physical health. It hurts our ability to leave violent situations. Families in Baldwin Park are struggling. It affects our children's education as they cannot concentrate on a constant education, as they're moving from place to place, from family to family. The goal, the goal of rent control would be to limit, what can be done, to limit the rent increases monthly and annually. And with the failure of Costa-Hawkins to be repealed, we are at the perfect compromise where we can rent control every apartment building built before 1995 in the city of Baldwin Park. We need solutions that bring families' rent down to a reasonable percentage of their incomes and allow those families to save for their future and future of their children. Any rent control measure should also include a strong just cause eviction rights for tenants and market rate relocation payments to those being displaced. In addition, but not instead of, we want the city of Baldwin Park to also study preserving any existing naturally occurring affordable housing, and to require any development in the city to include below market rate units in a, in a way that increases the amount of affordable housing. We look forward to real and permanent solutions to prevent homelessness, displacement of families, neighbors, and community members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Yes, yes. Well, let's, let's have public communication. Yes, good evening.
Someone left their cell phone right here on the table. My name's Eduardo Salzeda. You guys know, I wasn't actually going to get up, but, you know, it is shameful on the lawsuit for $7 million. I mean, you guys are going to get bashed on it, smashed, and it just opens the door for other identities to say, well, if they're giving out $7 million, let's go get some money from them. And it's ugly. I mean, I don't know the facts on it. I'm not going to talk on that. I'm going to go on the homeless epidemic we're about to have. We all know Sears and Montebello closed. If you drive around to Whittier area, you go where Whittier meets the Five Points by Washington's at, and that's where they had the walnut tree. Now, it's going to come. They're saying that the homeless epidemic is going to come. Me, I'm 53, I'm a carpenter, I could head for the hills, I could survive. But, people that either want to not work, because we're not going to say they're lazy, because opportunity is this a country built on. But, we know there's other factors that you have to look at, the lady of the, of the scales, that some people aren't going to get the job because they don't work as hard, they don't work as fast. Now, this country's coming to an economic, like we say in Spanish, que el caballo lo van a detener. Now, what I mean by that, we know that our trade embargoes that the president did, and you guys know all the factors, and you see, right now, we're having ripple effects. We're Latinos in here, we're Latin Americans, we're a melting pot of a lot of ethnic groups. But, what I see, and what I feel, is this homeless epidemic, if you're going to want them sleeping in front of your house, it's going to come. And if you guys ain't ready, and I've been telling you, it's not a lot of money that, you know, AQMD's throwing millions. You guys have between the tri-cities approximately a little $100,000 less than $1 million. You guys know. My mom had a stroke, so I haven't been at South Elmani, I haven't been with Jerry and I haven't been with Jerry in Almani, Mr. Lozano. We could be the forefront where we help them out, but remember, a handout ain't all the time a help out. And like the sheriffs, they got their hands full, and, and so do the Ballin Park Police Department. Then it gets out of control, you know, it turns into a drug-infested, like you have in South Central by the Mission, where it gets ugly. Now, this homeless stuff, like I told you, the Sears are closing, Amazon, order your stuff online, get it, it comes. That's gonna be another issue that the homeless, you know, are gonna be people that are CEOs, making all that money, pocket it. It ain't distributed right, the money. All I'm saying is, it's coming. And if we're not on the forefront here in Ballin Park,
Thank you very much.
To do something, we're gonna get, you guys are gonna see the people peeing on the streets.
Hi, dear mayor, Manuel Lozano and council members. I'm a resident of Ballin Park, and I want powerful rent control measure in our city. In the past, you have promised to bring solutions to help prevent homelessness, displacement, and gentrification. It is urgent that we come together and work on real solutions. Families in Ballin Park are struggling. Children are living in conditions that we have a negative impact on them for the rest of their lives unless we act quickly. Be value calls on me to do something about the precarious positions of many of my neighbors. The goal of any rent control measure should be relieve the financial burden on families. In some cases, they are spending close to 100% of their household income to just in rent. They have very little for their own needs, and any emergency would be a disaster for them. We need solutions that bring families rent down to a reasonable percentage of their incomes and allow those families to save for the future and future of their children. Any rent control measure should also include a strong just cause eviction rights for tenants and market rate relocation payments to those being displaced. In addition, but not instead of, we want the city of Ballin Park to also study preserving any existing naturally occurring affordable housing and to require any new development in the city to include below market rate units in a way that increase the amount of affordable housing. We are looking forward to real and permanent solutions to prevent homelessness, displacement of families, neighbors, and community members. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, at this point, I'll declare the public communication closed. At this, Alejandro?
Mayor, if you may. First of all, I want to thank everybody that came out here to speak and give us your concerns. I truly appreciate it, and I wanted to touch up on some of the things. Mr. Contreras, first of all, the comment that you made about our letting our leaders, our, our department heads run our departments, I can't agree with you more. I believe that every department head has a job, and they should be looking into whatever situations we may be having in our city. Yes, we are here to oversee, but I think, learning from the past, I think our city, we need to move in a different direction. And I think, I hope my colleagues would agree that maybe we should change the way we direct things and, and have our directors take charge. In this case, our CEO, which would be our city manager, Shannon, have him take the lead, and he heads all the departments. Every department has a head, they handle their situations, they all report to Shannon, and whatever situation is going around, whether it's in human resources, the police department, let the chief handle the police department. But everybody comes back to our CEO and reports whatever the situation is. He reports to us, and together, we can find a solution to whatever problems are going on. But I really feel strongly that we need to let our, our heads, our department heads do their jobs, and so that they don't feel intimidated. Not that they do, I don't know that they do or they don't. So, they can do their jobs correctly, and they could initiate whatever needs to be done so our departments can run smoothly. Everything goes to Shannon, and Shannon comes to us, and we direct from there. So, that way, we are not seeing problems with our departments. Another thing I want to talk about is the homeless. Yes, you're right, when we went to the forum, I did strongly talk about the homeless families and the affordable housing. And just so you know, a few months ago, a month, about a month and a half ago, I did have Shannon bring in the people, the builder, that built Marv's Place, to give us some information on how, on what it is that they're doing. And last meeting, Ricardo Pacheco also brought up the homeless. And again, I directed Shannon to please bring us more information on what else we can do and to partner with the city of Almani, because Almani's working on those homes. I remember going to see them. Just yesterday, I met with, with the Hope Foundation. They're working closely with the Alhambra Unified School District. As you all know, I worked for the, for the Ballin Park Unified School District. I was the school community liaison, meaning I work closely with all the families. I saw a lot of homeless families, and the city of Ballin Park was able to provide vouchers for me. So, I know the desperate need these parents have, that they're homeless, they have children. So, I was able to provide vouchers, able to send them to churches to get food. So, I understand the homeless problem. So, that's why I met with Hope, because they're already working the Alhambra Unified School District to help these families also. One of our board members from Ballin Park Unified District will be meeting with them as well. I told them I was gonna get more information on how we can help with the Measure H money so we can move forward with this. So, yes, I did talk about how important it is. So, I am moving forward with that. I am looking into see, to see what else we can do, and I directed Shannon to follow up on that, as well as Ricardo Pacheco. So, do know that I am working on it. But I appreciate that you come up here and that you let us know that you're concerned because you want to see more action, and I completely understand. So, I will keep you updated on what's going on and what else I'm finding out, so we can move forward with that. If you happen to know, I know, Beatriz, you're very involved. If you know of other sources that we can look at, I will be more than happy to get that information from you, because I'm not here, like Mr. Contreras said, every day. I can direct Shannon to have our staff look into it so that we can move forward with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. What, first of all, before I begin, Javi, I want to say happy birthday, brother. Thank you, I know you just turned 40. I was there not till long ago. So, wishing you, wishing you the best. Well, I'll also share the same thing that, yes, I remember when I spoke at St. John's and talked about addressing some of the issues. And the city Ballin Park is most definitely addressing the issue with Measure H regarding the homeless. And we're also partnering up with two other cities, combine some type of infrastructure to be able to house a lot of the homeless throughout, throughout the continent. Of course, getting some of that H money funding into Ballin Park. So, we're gonna see more information regarding that particular area. So, I just want to make sure that I let everyone know. But before I go on, I just want to mention, of course, it's no secret. It's been everywhere, it's been televised in our newspapers and so on and so forth. The city of Ballin Park was sued for $7 million. Let me, before I begin, the police chief, the female that was brought here that I personally had chosen and brought and interviewed with all the council members, Lily Hatso, was an exceptional police chief. She was an individual that was extremely popular in this community and within the department. And unfortunately, a reckless decision was made back in 2013. And it's important for me as a mayor to make certain that the clarification is there. The unfortunate part, the individuals to the left here, who were part of the propaganda back at that point, they never seemed to stay to want to hear the whole, the whole issue and what actually transpired. And I continue to support our former chief, Lily Hatso, as I mentioned, an exceptional individual. Yes, we were sued for $7 million. And to let everyone know, the city is self-insured up to $300,000. And from that $300,000, the insurance kicks in, ICMA. That particular insurance will pick up $6 million of the $7 million. The city of Ballin Park, unfortunately, has to pick up $1 million, which is a back pay wages for the former chief. From there, there's an additional, I should say, the $300,000 as well that we had to meet before the insurance kicks in. So, that's $1.3 million that the city of Ballin Park has to pay out of the general fund. I believe our general fund is about $7 million at this point in time, correct? In that area. So, that's very important for us to know. And it's, it's important for us to get that, that message out. And then, more so also, the vote itself back in 2013. Now, there's five council people on the, on the actual city councils, we know. All it takes is three votes to remove someone from the executive level. Now, back in 2013, the individuals that voted to remove this highly qualified police chief, Lily Hatso, were the following. Councilmember Susan Rubio is currently a senator, state of California. Also, councilmember Cruz Baca, and also our colleague, councilmember, councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. And you know what, in all fairness, councilmember Ricardo Pacheco to you, they're not mentioning the other two that are in there. And I have to make sure that that goes on the record, because those were the individuals that took that reckless, the reckless decision of terminating someone. And of course, now we pay the price. And what's important to note about that, that the residents of Ballin Park need to know, and I don't know how far we can do, but I definitely want to see that in the newsletter as well, because the residents need to know, excuse me, need to know. But we'll talk more about that at another session. It's important for us to know. Now, besides that, we also have another one, a former chief as well, who was an excellent individual. But because certain people played certain politics within the infrastructure of City Hall, decided at this point, this individual had to go. So, that's another potential lawsuit looming around the corner. And it's shameful, and I just wanted to share that for the record here today to those that are, that are here today. And that's important for us to know that a reckless decision was made back then. That $1.3 million could have gone to paving the streets, improving our parking wrecks, and looking at other potential venues throughout the city of Ballin Park. But that's the price we paid. Now, the dissenting voters, to make it clear, was the vice mayor, at that time, councilmember Monica Garcia, and myself were the dissenting voters that voted against the termination of a highly qualified and respected police chief at the time. And all, and on that specific note. But I just want to make sure that that is on the record. Mayor? Yes, councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Thank you, mayor. And just wanted to also discuss some of the issues. Want to thank, first of all, those that came here this evening to hear all the issues, especially those from the housing community that are here to discuss those important issues. Last, at our last council meeting, I put on the agenda to begin to discuss and bring the community together to talk about the housing issues. And not that I had a particular plan in place or a particular company that I wanted to promote, but to sit down together as a community and to hear from the school district, the water district, all of our community, all of our nonprofit organizations, our churches, to sit down and talk about this important solution. Yes, there's a lot of homeless, and we can't hide it. Everywhere you drive, every liquor store you stop by, or Walmart, or wherever you go, unfortunately, there's, there's homeless people. And there's a lot of reasons for it. A lot of them, because they didn't want to be there, but it just, the way the economy happened in different times and stages in the last few years have put them in that position. A lot of them live in cars, and they send their kids to school, and you hear all these unusual situations that unfortunately are there. The price of housing is exorbitant. Nobody could afford a $6,000 or $7,000 home. So, what I wanted to put out there is that we get together, have a series of workshops, and I talked about this at the last meeting, and get ideas from everybody to talk about how we could begin to look at affordable housing for our veterans, for our families, for single parents, to begin to look at ways that everybody could afford housing. In Ballin Park, 60% of the families in Ballin Park are, are, do not have enough money to pay the expenses just to live in an apartment. At the same time, I'm getting complaints from a lot of our residents, how the property owners and the apartment owners are raising, you know, their rent. And I'm talking for a family of, maybe the father's a mechanic, and the mom is a hairdresser, and they maybe bring in $30,000 together. And all of a sudden, the owner of that apartment jacks up the rent to like $500. And I think that's unheard of, and it's unfair. And I think we need to come together as a community to begin to address it. There's different ways that we can, we can do it to be able to, to assist those people for rent control. And there's also ways that we can do it to work with the property owners to be more reasonable. So, I want to sit down with everybody and this city council and just have an opportunity to hear about it. And I'm glad to hear that Mayor Lozano, at the next, you're having this, we're having the State of the City, also brought up a number of solutions there that he'll discuss too. But I think working together, we can begin to bring this issue. This isn't a conversation that'll just be here one day and we forget about it. We're gonna have several meetings and come up with solutions. And let's see what it is we can do together to be able to solve this problem. The other issue I wanted to bring about is, as the mayor said, the Lily Hatso lawsuit, the chief of police that was hired many years ago. I initially did not support her because when she was first appointed, or they had brought it up, she was not on the candidate list. There was at least five candidates that had applied. Two of the candidates, and this goes back, you know, five or seven years ago. So, a lot of people forget the history behind it. And two candidates at that time chose, were interviewed, were selected, and they decided not to take the position. So, somehow, Lily Hatso was not, who did not apply at the time, was brought up and discussed. But my objection was that she was not a candidate. And she herself said, in the following newspaper, that she was not qualified to be the chief. I think she went from a lieutenant, was an interim captain, and went on to be the chief. Now, given that, I voted for her in open session because I said, "I'll give her an opportunity." And she was there for five years, not shortly. She was there for a pretty long time. And after that, some of the issues that came out toward, toward the end were, there was two issues that, in her performance was one, it was during the traffic lanes, there's a lot of people, they have forgotten, was a lot of cars were towed away, a lot of people were arrested. And we had like, I don't know, three or four days of every, three or four council meetings that the community came out and was complaining about that. And that was, that really fell under her accountability. She needed to handle that. And she didn't handle it properly on the press, and everybody was upset about that. And how the cars were so later on or auctioned off was also a huge issue. So, that falls under her accountability, and I held her accountable. It wasn't a popular decision that I made. I know my colleagues to the right, who are in the city council now, didn't agree with me then, and they disagreed with me. And that's, you know, sometimes, you know, I'm not elected to be popular and make the, you know, a vote that you all, other people don't like. But I, you know, I didn't, I didn't agree with that issue. So, just the handling of those complaints was another issue. The other issue was, they're also trying to go to the sheriff's department and the city council, which I didn't support at that time, but two of my council leagues colleagues that were here were supporting it, I think. It's been so long, I even forgot who was there. But she did not really step up for her troops, you know. If we had gone to sheriff's, $150 police officers could possibly have lost their jobs. And they were in an uproar, and they were coming out at every meeting and meeting with us individually, and they were not in support of the sheriff's department. And, you know, and I supported a local police department. So, those were, those were the core issues that were happening five years ago and why I chose to do this special. Now, how that came on, maybe our lawyer that represented the city failed to, to express those concerns that we had of the community. And the other lawyer was able to make it a gender issue. It was not a gender issue. I didn't fire her because she was a female. I fired her because of accountability and performance issues. But somehow, our, and not this city attorney, but we, there's a firm that was representing through the insurance company, it's a complicated, but there was another firm that was handling it. And I think they did a poor job in handling our case and expressing the concerns of the citizens. So, we lost. It was a runaway jury. I don't agree with the excessive award that didn't really fall in line with the criteria that a jury's supposed to follow to make these kinds of awards. It was excessive, it didn't follow the right criteria. During the case, the judge failed and did not let the city have its full list of witnesses, which were police officers and other community members. And so, that wasn't fair for the city of Ballin Park, that that wasn't allowed to take place. I had asked the city council, and it was discussed today, whether or not we would appeal. I think the city should appeal this case, at least the award amount, and to fall back within the criteria that is expected of a jury to not be just driven emotionally by some attorney who was able to convince them that you should just charge the city these outrageous, you know, awards and be reasonable. And if, you know, I don't agree with, with, with the fact that they won the case and then they won this huge award. then they won this huge award. So we're looking at possibly an appeal, and we're seeing if it makes sense, and we'll hear more from that part. Early on, Dal Contrares, I think you left, I think at a time in the past, there was a time that we had to use what was called the E-team. Things were, this is going back almost 20 years when I was originally on the council, where we had the city council more involved in making the decisions. As the time has evolved, I, although we still have that same model in place, but I do think that the city manager does handle a lot of the day-to-day issues that are going on. A lot of city council members, at least the ones that are here, a lot of them, we all work full-time jobs and we communicate through email, and, but there's really no council members that are giving direction other than at the policy level. And so in that sense, we do have sort of the city manager model, where Shannon, our city manager, does take, you know, try to do a lot of projects in the city. And if you look around, you look at the landscaping, a lot of the new businesses that come in, you know, a lot of that is Shannon and his staff that have done a lot of that, that work out there to make sure that the city is going in a lot direct, in the right direction. Now, saying that, I know there's, there's a lot of work to be done, you know, we're not done yet, we're still trying to work together as a community to build the city up. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Yes, Councilmember Alejandro.
Another thing, if we can find a way to keep the community informed on where we're at with the housing situation, that way they know where to ask questions or where they can follow up. And also, just to make something clear, the trial attorney for the, for the Lily case was, was not Mr. Tafoya, it was somebody else, so he really was not involved in that case, and wanted to make that clear. Also, with our respect to my, my colleagues here, I, you guys both brought up, Mr. Lozano and Mr. Pacheco brought up two points that I'm trying to put across here, that if we let our directors take control of their departments, and if there's a problem that arises, have a due process, so these type of situations don't happen again. We can learn from our mistakes and we can move forward, or we can sit here and dwell and point fingers, and you did this and you did that. It's already happened, and I really would like to move forward and work together so that we can find a solution. And again, let our directors lead their departments, let Shannon work with our directors, find out what it is that they can fix the problems, of course, always keep us informed, and we can avoid a lot of these problems, in my opinion. So I really would like for all of us to work together. What happens already happened, let's move forward, and let's make, move the city forward so we can do better.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.
Thank you. So I also wanted to contribute to this conversation regarding the lawsuit and the $7 million award. I think it's important, as I've stated in the past, that we make decisions, we share our thought process with the community, and we own them, we own our decisions. And so I think that we were doing that here, and I think that's all that we can do as council members. I think it's also important for us to be very transparent, and I think, you know, that is something that we've, we've long touted. With that, I think it's important that our community is kept in the loop and up to speed on what is happening with this lawsuit, because I've talked with people who said, oh, you know, I heard about it on the news, I saw it three times, but I don't really know what, you know, what happened, who, how, you know, when, why. So my request would be to put this in the now, send this, you know, as part of the newsletter, explain what has transpired, explain, you know, perhaps what the next steps are. But I also need to say that for full transparency, this community also needs to know that vote, the vote that led to the termination. And, you know, unfortunately, that termination then led to the lawsuit, and here we are today. So that would be my request, and I think it's important, again, for full transparency, we're going to take up the minutes in a little bit, but our, our community deserves to know the who, what, when, why, where, and all of that. So as the mayor stated, this was a vote that was taken December 2013, and in a pretty heated conversation, there were three council members that terminated the chief at the time, along with others, and the mayor and I opposed those terminations. So again, I think, you know, it's important for us to get the full facts out to the community because they're confused and they're going off of news reports that were, are not really thorough. So we just need to provide them that update and keep them posted on this because these types of impacts, they affect senior programs. They affect our ability to provide programming and services. And so we do need to keep our residents aware and in the loop. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember, yes.
Thank you. I just want to add to this conversation, this dialogue. As I've stated in the past, you know, again, this is just a stark reminder of, you know, the decisions that we all made and the possible long-term effects that they have. You know, obviously, both myself and Councilmember Avila, we're not here for this, but again, you know, speaking, you know, on, on the issue of transparency and again of moving forward, you know, one of the things we want, we always need to make sure is, one, you know, we provide a workplace that's free of harassment, you know, we address, you know, here to all rules and the letter of the law, but at the same time, you know, we also hire executive directors and, you know, chief of police at some point here, to actually, you know, manage their departments responsibly. You know, we do hold them accountable individually. Not only do we hold, you know, Shannon, but the rest of the staff, that we work with them collectively, together, all of us. And that is one of those things that, you know, I just want to make sure that people understand, the decisions that we make today certainly have consequences, for better or for worse. And that's the one thing about myself, as I've stated to many people in the past, is, you know, I stand by every decision that I will ever make. I have no problem sitting, you know, sitting down with each and every one of you and explaining to you why I voted the way I voted. So that's the one thing you'll get from me, is exactly that. But with that, you know, we do have another lawsuit that's pending. I suspect that it will also result in a similar manner, which again, you know, if we're held liable for the loss of wages, that's something that's going to be taken out of our general fund. And those general funds are the programs that we can be help using for, help offset the CDBG programs that we have today, that we're talking about, you know, youth development, programs for our seniors, you know, roads improvements for our city, so housing exactly. So these are the things that, you know, all intertwine into everything that we're looking at, and it's again, you know, we can't necessarily dread on the past, it's about moving collectively forward, as we've been, you know, doing so since November 8th, I think is what it is. You know, we could agree to disagree professionally, but at the end of the day, you know, it's a matter of, you know, what we stand by and what we look towards. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that, councilmembers. All right. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and open up the, the, talk about that, the consent calendar. Councilmembers wishing to pull any items?
May I like to pull item number two?
Okay, number two. I will pull number, item number nine.
I just have a question.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. One moment. Okay, and number, number eight, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
May I like to pull number seven?
Okay, seven.
Mr. Mayor, number 13, please.
13. No, that's, that's, that's not part of it. We're going up to the end. All right. So at this point, seeing no further, I'd like to move from consent calendar, with the exception of items seven, eight, and nine, that's my motion.
Second.
What's that? Oh, and two, sorry about that. That is their second. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. Councilmember Monica Garcia, minutes, many minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this item, it is taking up the minutes from December 10, 2013. For one reason or another, they were omitted, and so we are going to, again, for full transparency, make that correction. So my recommendation, as I look at this draft minutes, is first of all, per the protocol that we have followed, is to list the council members in alphabetical order. So that's pretty, that's pretty easy, just the council members, of course, the mayor, Protem, and the mayor will stay the same. And then I would also point out that there were numerous typos in the report from closed session, and so I would like it to read as follows. It was reported to dismiss Chief Executive Officer Vijay Singal, comma, City Attorney Joseph Panoni, and Chief of Police, with a capital P, Lily Hadso. And this is what I would insert, in a 3-2 vote, comma, with assenting votes by council members, plural, Baca, Pacheco, and Rubio, and dissenting votes by Councilmember Garcia and Mayor Lozano. Then following that action, I would ask that, per our protocol, as, you know, the other minutes in the attachment, attachment two, that would, it would also include after the, the action, that it would account for the eyes, the nose, the absent, and the abstain. And then the second item is taken up, and it reads, it was announced police captain Mike Taylor would act as interim chief executive officer and interim chief of police. And then again, I would ask that we include the eyes, nose, absent, and abstain. Then the final.
Mayor, if I may ask?
Oh, give me one second, I just want to. And then in the third, in the third item, it was also reported to appoint Robert Tafoya of the firm, Tafoya and Garcia, City Attorney, 3-2, with assenting votes by council members Baca, Pacheco, and Rubio, and dissenting votes by Councilmember Garcia and Mayor Lozano. And then again, to include eyes, nose, absent, and abstain, because that's per the protocol. And those are my recommendations.
All right, I'll go ahead, second. But Councilmember.
Mayor, I just had a discussion.
Go ahead.
Why is this item being brought? This is, was already voted back in, you know, in 2013. I mean, why are we bringing it way back today to today? I mean, the ones that were there at that meeting aren't even here. Why would you?
What happened, Ricardo? There was nothing recorded. There was nothing. We couldn't find anything. We couldn't find the actual vote that took place back in 2013. Somehow, the actual recording itself was also erased, there was nothing there.
Recording was?
Yeah, the recording was erased.
Okay, well then, I would suggest.
Oh, we were?
Yeah. I would tell you, I would want more explanation. I'm not aware of what you're talking about, Mayor, that it was erased and so forth. It's a surprise to me that this is even being brought up. You're bringing back minutes from December 10, 2013.
Minutes that weren't.
You're telling me that weren't, well, then I need a report as to what happened. I'm not going to vote for this if I don't have more information. I mean, this is, like, brought here all of a sudden, you know, I mean, you guys could vote for it, I won't, I'll object.
I understand, but there was no documentation whatsoever, that's.
Well, I need a staff report as to why that's.
Brown Act violation.
Well, then I want a staff report as to what happened.
These minutes have not been approved.
Can we, can we, because Alejandro Avila was our city clerk at the time, can you, can you shed some light on what may have occurred here?
I recall that we were having problems. I recall we were having problems with our recording system and even to be able to type anything up. So I don't know if this was one of the times, but for a long time, we had a lot of problems with it. So that could have been the reason. Now, if we based it just on the written notes, could have been a reason why everything wasn't noted correctly.
So that's why we were bringing it up now, Councilman Pacheco, is because this is actually a violation of law. Whenever we take up an item in closed session and we report out, it act, you know, that is by the Brown Act, that is, that is governed by the Brown Act, and we are required for transparency to post the minutes, to make them available to the public. And unfortunately, when I looked at the minutes for this date, it actually said, no minutes are available for this closed session item, and I was baffled, quite frankly, I was baffled because that is completely out of our protocol. And I know for a fact that we took up decisions in closed session, and we came down here, and we reported out to the public, and I remember the conversations that we had here. So we're going off of the accounts of the evening, and I know that the city attorney and the CEO, you know, did their investigation and spoke with people to get the accounts of the evening. And mostly the city attorney, because he was present, he was present for them. So this is very much in sync with what I recall. I mean, there is more that I could add, but I won't because this is factual.
And, and just to add, at that time too, we didn't have a deputy city clerk, a consistent deputy city clerk, that was handling the day-to-day activity in the office. So there was a lot going on at the time. Our system wasn't working, we didn't have a deputy city clerk there every day. So we did fall behind on a lot of minutes, if you recall. Once we did get someone on board, we were approving minutes that were more than a year late, as you could see, this one had not been.
I agree. I agree. So with that, I motion to approve.
I'll go.
As amended, thank you.
And I'll second. Any objections?
I would object.
Okay, one objection. At this point, Madam City Clerk, we could take roll call. So there is one objection to the, to the amendment of the actual, to the actual minutes for 2013 by Vice Mayor Monica Garcia. So at this point, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Alejandro Avila? Councilman Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilman Ricardo Pacheco?
No.
Mayor Protem? Monica Garcia?
Yes.
And Mayor Lozano?
Yes, okay, the motion passes for one. All right, so at this point, we'll go ahead and, at this point, do we need a mo, okay, then that's fine. At this point, we'll go to item number seven, which is approve of the design-built contract with Merge Conceptual Design LLC for professional services and art public space project, including artwork design, fabrication, and installation of sign structures and digital display. At this point, Monica Garcia, number seven.
Oh, Mayor, in the study session, I requested that we bring this item back.
Okay.
For a presentation from the consultant as to their community outreach process and.
Right, so at this point, we're going to bring that back then.
Okay.
So the study session, okay.
That would be my motion.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor to bring item number eight back, so, number seven, approval of design-built contract. So at this point, I'll second. Any objections? Seeing none, so move.
Just discuss, did you want to bring that back in a workshop forum, or?
The study session.
Study session.
Because you're here already, I don't want to.
Yeah, let's do it. Let's do it when it come back, it'd be best.
Yeah, so sorry.
Sorry about that. All right, thank you very much. All right, at this point, item number eight, which is the accept plans and specifications and authorize publishing of the notice inviting bids for CP, CP, CIP, excuse me, 19-19 citywide sidewalk and concrete improvement projects. At this point, Alejandro Avila?
Very simple question, Sam, only because I just want to know what part of Main Street I can't tell, I should have driven and looked at the address, but if you can give me an idea between what part of Main, like, let's say, the post office to Ramona, you know, give me an idea what part of Main you're talking about here?
Yeah, so there's several locations along Main. One of them is close to, I guess that's Palm Street, it's between that, that area, so.
The Palm to what about?
So there's various locations, so one of them is there, these are small areas, so it's not a large stretch.
So just sections of the sidewalk?
Just sections of damaged sidewalk that could be considered trip hazards.
Okay. I thought it was going to be like a big section of Main Street that was going to be, okay. That's all I needed.
It's various repairs, and we can get you the addresses where each repair is.
I actually have the addresses.
Yeah, the addresses are attached to the staff report.
I was just under the impression that it was a big section of Main from one point to another, but if you're saying it's sections that are just damaged, okay, that was all. Thank you.
All right, number nine, I requested a second reading of ordinance number 1438 entitled, excuse me. Oh, go ahead, there's a motion by, by Councilmember Alejandro to pass eight, I'll second. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. Sorry about that. Item number nine, a second reading of ordinance number 1438 entitled, an ordinance of the city, council of the city of Ballin Park, California, authorizing the city Ballin Park to enter into a development agreement with Rookly Inc. for the distribution of cannabis and the real property located at 4150 Poynte Avenue. At this point, we'll request that we bring this back to a following meeting. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Second. Any objections? Seeing none, so move.
Mayor, really quick on that one.
Sure.
When we bring it back, just a quick question, because when I looked at the summary for the staff report that originally was brought up, it says amending development agreement 1803 between the city of Ballin Park and Rookly to grant manufacturing license in order to packet, repackage product to cultivate and manufacture of cannabis and blah, blah, blah. But then when I read the actual agreement here, there's actually an extra sentence on there, and it says, nothing in this statutory agreement is intended to limit the manufacturing license granted here on. Why is that added and not on the summary part? If you can clarify that.
Yeah, legal counsel, or who?
So there's an additional sentence at the end that was not in the actual staff report.
To the city council.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Avila. This section was added so that Rookly Inc. would be able to repackage product from our cultivators and our manufacturers. A distributor such as Rookly needs to have a manufacturing license in order to repackage product from distributors and manufacturers. So because they're an exclusive distributor for the. So, because they're an exclusive distributor for the City of Baldwin Park, if they did not have this ability, then some of our cultivators or manufacturers that wanted to give them bulk product, repackage it and then send it out, they would not be able to do that business, because they have to work with Rookly. So, Rookly asked that they get a manufacturing license, and that was done to re, in order to repackage and do the things they need to do to be a full-service distributor. The last sentence was added in order to clarify that even though they're getting the manufacturing license to repackage product, they do have a manufacturing license and they can manufacture actual product if they so desire. And so, in order to make sure that that was clear, this sentence was added.
So, is, my question, is that the norm to add that to the actual contract when it's in the summary, it's not there? Is that pretty normal?
Well, I, I, I had to negotiate the contract, but I didn't do the staff report, and so that's why it wouldn't, but, but.
Or should they be matching, is my question.
I think that it probably would have been fine to have them matching. And I, again, I didn't look at the staff report before it was.
And if I could add, the first reading, it, the staff report did include the information regarding the repackaging, but oftentimes, we simplify the staff report for a second reading, because it's more of a bare bones, since it's already been introduced.
Okay, it's just because this, the addition of the extra sentence, it just gives a different definition from the original staff report. So, that was my concern.
For your vote?
Yeah, you're bringing it back anyways.
Right, so at this point. We're going to go ahead and bring that back. Is that what you're requesting?
You request that.
Oh, the one, oh, I thought you changed.
I just had a question.
Any objections? See, none, so move. Thank you very much. All right, the next one, we're going to go into the public hearing, which reads the stuff of that. "A Request to City Council from the Planning Commission on the Amendment to the Downtown TOD, Specified Plan SP one-five-dash-zero-one to modify the southwest boundary location one-four-two-zero-zero Ramona Boulevard, applicant Oliver Gabe, case number ASP nineteen-zero-one." So, let everybody know, this particular case, I think it's important for us, it is going to be the Starbucks, which will be built downtown Baldwin Park on Baldwin Park Boulevard and Ramona, the old, the old actual W, was it WSS?
Yes, W.
Right, okay, so right in that, right in that specific area. So, okay, Jean, competitive with your donut place there. Okay, all right, so at this point, I guess I'll open up the public hearing.
Ron is here, he has any questions on the project, and he has a site plan and any information, if you, if you would, Ron Garcia is here, if you, if you would like a brief staff report.
Yeah, you know what, yeah, let's, do we have the concept drawings on that, Ron?
Yeah, come on up.
You have the concept drawings?
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's put them up. Oh, good. I'm glad Mike Tuohy stayed. He's, get this project going.
Okay, Council. Is it going to be an additional restaurant in there? Let me just skip the couple slides here, since we're going straightforward. So, this is the proposed site plan, this is on one-four-two-zero-zero Ramona Boulevard.
You need tablets.
Let me get the. Sorry. Trying to look for the laser here. Oh, here we go. Okay, so here's the entrance, this is Ramona, and this is the entrance of the drive-through here. So, they'll enter here and they have the ability to exit out to Ramona or exit out of Sterling Way. The building's going to be converted into four tenant spaces, Starbucks being here on the Westerly side. So, these are elevations, existing photos of the existing building from Ramona and Sterling. And this is the proposed rendering for the Starbucks. Wow, that's going to be nice. Also like to add that the applicant is present, if you'd like to ask, ask the applicant any questions.
I just like to ask staff a question.
Have you seen?
Are they going to really keep the trees? Because I know there's some nice pine trees.
The question that had come up previously, said, "Planning Commission, the trees," from my understanding, are going to remain. Oh, yeah.
Come on, I want to put it in writing. I don't want them to come down on accident or something.
We'll confirm that.
Okay, that's, that's fine, that's fine.
What are the item?
What's that?
Are waiting. Just say, again, where are the cars going to come in through this? Through an existing drive, driveway already?
Yes, yes, there is.
Yeah, so let me go, this is Sterling, so there's an entry, entry here from Sterling.
Right.
And then from Ramona Boulevard, if we go back to the site plan, so there's an entry here.
Sterling's on the backside, right?
And Sterling is on the backside, correct.
That's where, that's where there's, across the street from that's residence?
So, across the street from that, yes, it is residences.
And are we taking into consideration the amount of traffic flow that's going to be going out there in regards to the residents living across the street?
So, currently, as we speak with this, if the council decides to move forward with this specific plan amendment, we are currently reviewing the traffic study that we requested to be prepared. So, currently, right now, planning staff and the Public Works Department are reviewing the traffic study, so it's still in review.
I'm sorry, you're reviewing or repealing?
We're reviewing, I'm sorry.
Reviewing?
Reviewing, correct.
Okay, sorry, fat here.
And I know, just in the past, there was a Kentucky Fried Chicken there that used to be a drive-through.
Oh, yeah.
There, and then there's.
No, it's further down.
Yeah, it's like within the same area, it's behind Sterling Way, and there's also that donut shop.
It's a donut shop that to go over.
Jean likes, they have a drive-through also. Well, actually, that's the old Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Yes.
So, there is already a drive-through.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.
You know, can we go back to the rendering?
Sure. Not that nice.
I'm wondering, I still see the Chase building, I'm wondering if there's anything else that can be done to really make it a little more aesthetically pleasing? Maybe some more contemporary, like, panels or something, I don't know, and some more, like, shrubbery? I know that it's already, you know, there's concrete or there's asphalt there, but perhaps there's some planters that can be included, just, I'm just thinking about the aesthetics.
Good point. I mean, that's something we can discuss with the developer. Before coming on board, the design review had already been processed as far as the aesthetics of the alternative materials to the elevations of the building. If I can go back to the, the site plan, there is landscaping being proposed and upgraded throughout the parking lot.
Awesome, okay.
I can't recall if we have, again, it's just a rendering, but there is some, some, some landscaping to soften the appearance of the building as well. And again, it's just a, a rendering.
Cool, but.
But we can work with the applicant.
You?
To see if we can ask for additional alternative materials.
Okay, maybe a couple more, like, you know, just to, alternatives, just to see something a little bit more spruced up. It's a great location, and I, if you go back to the rendering, yeah, it just seems like it's pretty much, you know, the same that what, what we currently have, and I feel like, especially if we're giving a specific plan, and of course, we want to be supportive, but let's look at what, what are some alternatives to this?
Absolutely.
And, I mean, a little bit goes a long way, so, you know, surprises.
Come on up, come on up.
Hi. So, hearing what you're saying, just real quick with the renderings, try not to show that much greenery, so you could actually see the building. Only other thing is, it's actually not what's there right now. Right now, what you have is just one solid brick wall. What we're offering is, we're cutting in these openings along the brick wall and keeping that aesthetic, because, I mean, honestly, I think the brick look is beautiful, but you, we're basically making that whole opening that, that's a walkway, and we're putting a big glass wall across that. So, it's, I know it kind of looks the same, because maybe you don't see the depth.
I don't see it, but now when you point it out, I do more so.
Yeah, but adding greenery to the site, we are working very closely with our landscape architect. We will be submitting landscape plans soon, and, yeah, we've been trying to just make it as green as possible.
Let me ask a question. I know that there is room for additional, I don't know, some other type of restaurant, right?
Yeah, there's, so there's definitely significant amount of space for other restaurants, and, I mean, there's a lot of uses we could put out there. We definitely want to put something food-oriented.
Okay, what's the total square footage of that entire building?
The total square footage of the entire building is.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't remember it off the top of my head. I apologize. But, yeah.
All right, okay, so you'll bring it back with other aesthetics, so we get a better view, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, I like the brick, too, and I think it's very fitting for the downtown area, because our, you know, like, the Knolls Pharmacy is the brick building, and it's very charming for our downtown, so I'm not saying that we should do away with the brick at all. I don't want you to take that away from this, but perhaps, you know, you can come back with the, with additional renderings that can help us see this a little bit more, maybe from different angles, too. Whatever you think will help us see what you see. And, you know, perhaps, I don't, I don't know, perhaps some, something a little more interesting, too, I don't know.
All right, sounds, sounds good. Bring that rendering back.
But otherwise, we're excited about it.
All right, great. Glad.
Can't put my sign up there anymore after that. All right, so let's get, let's get moving.
No other questions?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. At this point, I will open up the public hearing for anyone to wish, excuse me, that would like to speak regarding this particular subject in favor. Mike, you raised up your hand? Oh, okay, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we'll go, anyone that's opposing? All right, so at this point, I will now go ahead and close the public hearing. So, at this point, I'm going to go, hold, excuse me, staff recommends that the city hold a, well, at this point, we need a motion, am I correct? All right, I'll make a motion to go ahead and pass the, the downtown TOD, specific plan SP fifteen-dash-zero-one to modify the southwest boundary location one-four-two-zero-zero Ramona Boulevard, applicant Oliver Gabe, case number ASP nineteen-zero-one. That is my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See, none, so move. Go Starbucks. All right, at this point, we'll go over to the reports of officers, item thirteen, which is the fiscal year twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, Community Development Block Rent, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Funds Home Annual Action Plan. So, do we have, let me. Okay, so, we did not make any changes yet, we did go through the, allow the public hearing, am I correct?
Correct, yes.
So, so at this point, let me see. All right, so the, I guess we could go down, down the actual, review them real quick, we have the total, hold on, let me just double check here. So, we have just these that are here. So, we have the Church of the Redeemer, I'll just read them real quick, Food Bank, the, the request is twelve thousand five hundred, and it's ten thousand that's been approved for that. Domestic Violence Advocate, the request is thirty thousand, and they were provided twenty-five thousand. The ESGV Coalition for the Homeless, request is ten thousand, they are given ten thousand. The Family Service Center was authorized twenty-five thousand, they were also given the twenty-five thousand. Graffiti removal, thirty thousand, excuse me, thirty thousand in fiscal year twenty, twenty-eighth, twenty-nineteen, now they requested forty thousand, and they were allocated the total of thirty thousand, that's what the staff's recommendation. The Pride Platoon, twenty thousand, the, the, excuse me, was requested and was provided, they actually requested thirty-nine thousand, but were given the total of twenty thousand. The Recreation and Sports Scholarship, applicants requested thirty-five hundred, they're giving thirty-three hundred dollars. The Santa Anita Family Service, no request, actually, so at this point, we're skipping this one, am I, am I correct? All right, so this, St. John's requested the total of two thousand one hundred, request was tw, two thousand one hundred and fifty, am I correct? And they were allocated the total of, of, of two thousand one hundred and fifty. The youth employment was requested eighteen thousand, they were provided with fifteen thousand. And also, the Mines Cut Out of San Gabriel Valley, new program, allocated ten thousand, and where they're being provided with five thousand. So, the totals, the total is one hundred and ninety-one thousand one hundred and thirty-one.
A request.
Requests, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I can?
Yes.
Can I just ask a quick question, because that might help me ask my second question or so? Ben, just really quickly, when do we anticipate understanding the award for this?
We, we anticipate that we will be hearing about the final funding from HUD in the next thirty to sixty days, but I can't guarantee that, that's just something that we have no control over.
And then the other question is, given the history of CDBG that we've received, has there been an increase over the, over the last, even last year or over the last three years? Or are we seeing a decrease?
I can have Suzie, our housing manager, comment on that further, but I, even, whether it's been an increase or a decrease, it's still no predictor of what could happen this year. It really isn't, in my experience over the last twenty years. But Suzie, could you maybe?
Last year, actually, was the first time that we did slightly increase, and they're saying that this year, we're just pretty much looking at what we had last year. But it, they're just slight increases, probably not even ten percent of increase.
Got it. Thank you.
And also, just so you, so you're aware, this is the first public hearing, or the first actually continued. We will have another one, once we get the final allocations, at which time, if it does increase significantly, you can make additional changes at that time also.
Right, I mean, just, one of my recommendations would be, if we actually do receive additional funding, we would actually go back to each of these and provide the allocated resources as requested, such as the Pride, and actually increasing some additional funds for Wrecked and Parks, from the fifteen thousand to at least twenty thousand to be able to, how to have additional youth employment programs. And of course, also provide additional funds for the Church of Redeemer's Food Bank, it's one of the few, you know, survivors, providers here in the city that does that, so that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
All right, sounds good.
Mayor, is there someone here from the Pride program? Did I have a question for? I know they were here last time.
Hi, Cynthia. Really quick, because I'm a big advocate of Pride, because when I was working at the junior high, I had a lot of students that I had to refer, and it was a very successful program, so I got to see firsthand the success of the program, so thank you. And estimating, how many students do you enroll per program, more or less?
Well, this program right now, this is our second week, and we have thirty-three that are starting the program. Usually, we have, we start about with forty students, and it all depends who's, you know, they drop out or not, but right now, our program is thirty-three students.
Okay, and you're still looking to enroll more, or is it too late?
It's too late, because we're already into the third week.
Okay, that would be one of my priorities, if we are to receive more money, because again, I firsthand have seen the success, working with junior high students and high school students, so it's very successful. Also, the graffiti removal, anyone here? Thank you, Cynthia. Anyone here from graffiti? Chief? So, for the graffiti removal, I know somebody.
Mr. Ginteris can speak about that, yeah.
I know we have seen an increase in graffiti, so I would assume that's the reason why we would need more funds for that. I do know that you guys are quick at getting to the, the problem, so again, that's another of my, they kind of go hand in hand, the Pride and the graffiti, because these kids that are in this program are the kids that are out doing graffiti, so I, I think those two programs work really well together, so I would like to see an increase in that, if we do get more funds, that would be my request. Thank you.
All right, the, well noted.
problems. So again, that's another of my, they kind of go hand in hand, the Pride and the graffiti, because these kids that are in this program are the kids that are out doing graffiti. So I think those two programs work really well together. So I would like to see an increase in that if we do get more funds. That would be my request. Thank you.
All right, well noted. All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and move on. I will go to item 14.
So we're going to make option one for now?
Oh, okay.
Approved.
All right, go ahead. We're going to, there's a motion. I'll second. Any objections?
What's the motion?
For option number one.
Motion is option one.
Right.
Based on availability of new fund grants coming later and then we'll discuss it then.
Yeah, and then we'll revisit.
And okay, I second. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. All right, so we'll go down to item 14, which is the second reading of ordinance number 1439 entitled Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ballen Park, establishing a community choice of aggregation program pursuant to the Public Utilities Code. Who's handling this?
This is only on report of officer because it needed to be read, allowed into the record as last time. We did have the consultant here to give a presentation and it was approved on consent calendar.
I'll go ahead and make a motion and adopt the ordinance number 1439 entitled Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ballen Park, establishing a community choice aggregation program pursuant to the Public Utilities Code. That is my motion. Hello? Motion?
Second.
Second. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. All right, this point, item number 15, which is the approve and adopt a resolution number 2019 dash 010 entitled a resolution of City Council of City of Ballen Park, appointing representatives and alternatives and official representative of the city and review appoint members to the established committee. Do you guys want to move this over?
Unless Ricardo wants to take them all.
Let's move them over. Let's do, we're going to do all the other ones over. So I want to, I just want everyone to know as well.
Does anybody want the foothill?
So, hold on, Chris. All right, so at this point, we're going to just, hold on. So, so yeah, let's go ahead and bring it back. Okay, so let's go under the communications request by council member Alejandro Avila for city council discussion and direction to the staff the following. Council member Avila is requesting the discussion and direction to staff to pursue grant fundings in the amounts of 6.6 million and complete the shovel-ready Civic's Grand Park project, including the city hall frontage area and the city-owned properties across the street from city hall. That's council member Alejandro Avila.
Thank you, Mayor. And I stated here is to look at grant opportunity, meaning that wouldn't cost the city any money. I was, I've been listening and looking at all the great things Sam and his staff are doing to our city to making sure Ballen Park is just more beautiful as the days go by. That public art digital display that they're working on, the, the street improvements, the sidewalks, the lighting, I see how everything's just working hand in hand. And now this new Starbucks building that's, that's being proposed right there on Sterling and Ballen Park Boulevard. I, I looked at the project that was proposed a few years back and yes, 6.5 million is a lot of money. However, it's a beautiful project. There's a lot of trees and Ballen Park, although we have a lot of trees, we can never have enough and enough space for our residents to gather, to, to, you know, we can have concerts, we can have dances. I'm going to have Sam show us a little bit more of the, of the plan for the Civic Center Plaza that I think Ballen Park would really benefit and it would really get on the map. As you see, that's the, that's city hall right here, the one right to the front and across the street is where we would build that plaza or what you call Socalo in Mexico. All the plazas are called Socalos. And it's right in front of the metro link. So anybody coming into our city or from either direction, the first thing they would see is this beautiful plaza where we would host events, like a tree lighting ceremony, maybe contests. Like I believe a few years back, we had a singing contest there where our residents were, were performing and they won awards. There's just so many things we can do there. There's also room, there's for retail. So if Sam can explain a little better than I, I just thought it's a beautiful project. It would do a lot for the city. It would enhance what you're already doing to our city if we can find a way to, to get grants. So we can continue with the beautification of our city. That would just be wonderful. I'm very interested in this project and I know they worked for over a year and a half trying to put this together. So if you can show the slide and explain a little bit more, Sam, I would really appreciate it.
If, if, before, if I could interrupt, before he starts, if we could queue up, there's a little animation that was created and it will show you a little better the space. It starts from as if you're at the city hall property. Well, here, so the city hall is to the right, the beige building to the right.
Look at what a beautiful city hall we would have there. And it would make that cross, Pacific is a very dangerous cross street. We've seen accidents. Just for the Christmas event, child got ran over just trying to cross right there. So that would avoid all of that there. We can have the tree lighting ceremony. That could be our tree every year that we go out there and gather to light our Christmas tree. And when the train pulls up, they see that beautiful tree. We can host many concerts, activities, artists, home readers. We can host a lot of things in this park. And then we have the retail space. You can have the train in it. Sam, so if you can give us more information on this beautiful project?
Sure. Thank you, council member Avila. So I, I prepared a short slide, just the one slide and outlining some of the features of, of the project. The, the project covers three acres of lot area that encompasses the lots across the street from city hall and a portion of it within city hall. The features are a pavilion. This is a raised and covered deck. That's about 810 square feet. As council member Alejandro mentioned, there is retail space proposed, two retail suites, and that's about 3,200, 3,250 square feet. Also, at the pavilion, there is a water feature that's proposed there with a wading pool at the base of the pavilion. Also, not really shown on the video or here, but there's a piceo that is proposed that connects Ramona to, to the plaza. There's some monument signs, as you can see, new, new City of Ballen Park monument signs proposed, wayfinding and directional signage. Those are like the big, the big features. Also, the types of events that can be held there, just talking to other departments, farmer's market, wedding, photo opportunities, tree lighting, outdoor cinema, bicycle and safety, rodeos, food and wine tasting walks, dancing such as our astic dancers that practice at the arc or shows. Folks can do their tai chi in the morning, poetry readings, job fairs, art shows. And one not mentioned here is the, it could, you know, it could also function as the start of like the national night out event where everyone gathers and walks down to the target site. So there's, there's many more. These are just some of the ones that we were brainstorming and came up with. The other thing I want to mention is that the plans and specifications are complete. This is a shovel-ready project. They were completed in 2015 using an older code. So they would only require to be updated to the latest building code specifications.
And of course, that would not, that is not a project that I took in hand. It's this council that, that we're looking into putting this project there because it's so beautiful. And, and again, the enhancements that we are going through in our city, it reminded me of that project. So, you know, I asked if, if I could see it and they showed it to me and I, it brought back to me what a beautiful project it was and how it would enhance. It just goes hand in hand with all the, all the new things we're putting into our city, just making it more beautiful. So I would really like to consider to see if we can get some type of grants to get this project going. I think our community would benefit from it. Our school district would benefit from it because maybe our students can come here and perform, do the performances, whether it's chorus or their bands, their dance groups. Like you said, there's a lot of opportunity for our community members to get involved and it would just make everything so much more beautiful here in this area. Thank you. Thank you, Sam, for that.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. At this point, I guess we could bring back for...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, council member Paul Hernandez.
Thank you. Council member Avila, I really appreciate you bringing, you know, bringing up this project and more specifically, you know, the task of us searching and seeking out grants for our parks. As you're aware, you know, our city is definitely, you know, needs of, we need additional open space for our community members. You know, one of the things and one of my concerns is, you know, given the limited land that we have here, considering we have, we're, we're a city that's essentially built out, you know, looking for land that we can use for our affordable housing and additional housing stock, I find that this would probably be a better fit personally, that we can do that, considering, you know, as you mentioned, it's close to about three acres worth of property that can be used for, for housing. And that's something that's desperately needed in our community, just as much as a park. I would hope that we could apply some of these grant funds towards Morgan Park and also, and also look towards service agreements with the school, school district. Use some of those grants where we could begin to open up the parks, excuse me, the schools that we have for our neighbors. Again, you know, schools are placed in our, in our residence based on need and based on population. And those are areas that, you know, for, for whatever reason, we haven't necessarily fully developed agreements with the, with the school district. And hopefully now, you know, we can look towards using and going in that direction. But this is, you know, it's, it's a commendable, commendable project. But I personally feel that this is something where I think this land could be used better, better used for housing development, but use those grant funds that perhaps might be available for the city, either at Morgan Park to help redevelop, you know, the areas in which we have our summer, summer programs, concerts and so forth, but also to help use that money towards opening up the school districts' facilities that they have for the weekend and for the evenings for our residents that are already there. So, thank you.
Thank you, council member. And I appreciate those comments. And you're right, we do need more affordable housing. And there is other areas for affordable housing. I just feel that in the downtown area, they're doing a lot of work and beautifying the city. We've already added the project that we have behind us, the project on Medelo. And I feel we're getting enclosed by so many buildings instead of making it an open area. I definitely agree that we have to get more housing opportunity into our city and there is other land uses. I know Mr. Pacheco pointed out some other areas that are, are possibilities for our land. I just feel that this open space area just adds to our parks. It adds to more open space to our community. We can look into the district, opening up their fields. From my experience, I know they, they have a problem with it because they do get very damaged and they haven't been able to get refunded for those damages. But that's something we can revisit with them, definitely. Again, I just feel like our city is getting enclosed by buildings around our city hall. We just need more open space. And let's look at other areas for the housing, but we definitely need to bring the housing in. I can't agree with you more. Thank you.
Mayor?
All right, thank you, council member Monica. I got to see.
I just want to, well, these are, this is a great rendering. Thank you, council member Avila, for this presentation. I do agree with council member Hernandez. And I do think that this is an opportunity site that I would like to see used for housing to activate our downtown area. We just received a wonderful proposal or rendering for that Starbucks. And so I just think that downtown LA, I mean, I'm sorry, downtown LA, downtown Ballen Park, we need to really, you know, get that economic engine going. And how do we do that? We look at other cities, what has supported that type of, of activity is putting housing next to the downtown, activating the space, activating the community. You know, we have this beautiful affordable housing project that some of the, some of the, you know, council was very reluctant, but we ended up moving forward and we celebrated this beautiful project. I want to say there are about 70 units that became available to low-income seniors, families, veterans. And we received over 1,000 applications for that housing. And so that just speaks to the demand. If we create those opportunities, then I think that our residents will, will certainly benefit. And when I look at this rendering, I think it would be wonderful to use these types of grants to spruce up Morgan Park, that amphitheater, you know, like council member Hernandez said, kind of spruce up our existing park space. And I would absolutely join the effort to collaborate with the school district to open up the fields and make more park space available in our neighborhoods. And I know that LA County had released a study not too long ago showing that Ballen Park was park poor. And they outlined where in our city we needed parks. And in our downtown area, it wasn't a priority as much as, let's say, the northern part of the city or to the, the west part of the city. And so I think it's a great presentation. I would, I would be an advocate for keeping these opportunity sites for housing and, and folding it into the comprehensive housing plan, I think, that council member Pacheco was referring to earlier. And then, you know, just sprucing up our parks where grant money has become available.
All ready? Okay, any more input? If not, thank you very much. Excellent presentation. All right, so the following that we have is a request by Recreation and Staff for City Council Direction on the following. The, so this is the state of the city this coming Friday. So the city council name being, who do we have for invocation? Do we have Pastor, anyone?
We, we, Mr. Mayor, we could have one of the council members provide the invocation in the past, council member Ricardo Pacheco. So up to council discretion.
Or, or we can invite one of the clergy.
Well, you, that's fine, it doesn't matter. So at this point, we'll put councilman Ricardo Pacheco for the invocation. Then city council for the flag salute. Do we have a service person?
We do have a service person. We have US Army from the ZUSA recruiting center.
Okay, awesome, awesome.
So we would have the city council member introduce them.
And then you have the national anthem person already.
Yes, sir. We do have national anthem from service to high school.
Oh, got it, got it. Sorry about that. I see. All right, so council, city council, who wants to introduce the US Army from the ZUSA? Do you want to do that, Vice Mayor?
Sure.
All right, sounds good. All right. And then the national anthem, who wants to introduce the national anthem person? Alejandro?
I can do it, yes.
All right, thank you very much. All right. And then who wants introduction of dignitaries? Or do you want to do that, Monica?
Um, oh my gosh.
I mean, I don't know. You're the vice mayor.
Okay.
Okay, so let's do that. And then we'll put councilman Ricardo Pacheco. He'll do the flag salute. Introduce that, the gentleman for the flag salute. Okay? And then introduction of...
The honorable mayor.
Oh, that's me. That's right. Okay. Who's going to do that?
Me to do the introduction of dignitaries and then introduce the honorable mayor.
Okay, let's do that. Yeah, councilman Ricardo Pacheco.
He's doing the flag salute.
No, you're doing the flag salute.
No, no. She's going to do the national anthem. Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on, Paul. Paul, you don't...
Monica's doing the flag salute.
He's, well, no, don't give me another shot.
My schedule may not allow me to attend.
If it, if it does, then we can certainly add...
That's fine. Thank you.
Like where, where I'm introducing dignitaries and council member Paul Hernandez can do that. So we'll, we'll accommodate. But right now, it sounds like he's not going to be available that, that day.
I can introduce the invocation, but I thought, yeah, I can do, introduce the invocation if he's not here and do the national anthem.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we have everything straight?
Got it.
So looking forward, thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and make a, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion for the adjournment of city council meeting. That's my, my motion. Is there a second? Hello?
Second.
The second by councilman Paul Hernandez. At this point, I have the adjournment. At this point, we have the, open up the, the housing authority. Okay, we have consent calendar. So at this point, we have the consent calendars, Ballen Park Housing Authority, public housing, we've already discussed that, items one and two. Am I correct? All right, so at this point, that's my motion. I move for approval.
Oh, second?
Second. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. At this point, I will move for adjournment. That's my motion.
Second.
Any objections? Seeing none. Good night. Viva Ballen Park.